Call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Ensign. Kahoho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elizabeth.
Here.
Williamson. Angstrom.
Here.
Item number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
None.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Kahoho Kelly.
Here. Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Here. Yes.
You can vote for president. All right, item number three, presentation of petitions and other communications, a fiscal year 2024 audit, Kevin Houston.
Good evening. Got done with the audit several weeks ago now. We, you are normal procedures which are prescribed by the state auditor's office. We go through all the things that they want us to do, a lot of compliance issues to look at, that sort of thing. The biggest thing we had this year, this was the first full year the city was on a new software system. And that presented its own challenges. Um, I don't think I've ever been around any kind of software conversion that's gone particularly smoothly and great interest in test of that. Um, and so we identified some issues in relationship to that. We got together with the city staff, we got together with the software company. We worked through all those things, we got everything identified that need to be identified and all the corrections were made. So we felt very, very confident. Most things were done, that everything was, um, the way it should be, everything was accounted for, everything was recorded correctly. So that was the biggest, um, thing we had to deal with this year in addition to the normal things, federal grants, compliance issues in relationship to that. But besides that, it was just, it was just the software conversion. And I know it was, I know it was frustrating for everybody involved because to be honest, we got to a point where the software company wasn't being the most helpful. We got a different person involved under, I got a different person involved with that. And they handled it very well. Uh, so once those things got done, we were really happy with the way things turned out. So otherwise, it's just a normal, normal audit. Uh, and all the things went along with it. We had no concerns, no big issues with anything there. So. If anybody has any questions, we have everything.
Mike, thank you for all your extra work on this.
You're welcome. Glad to help.
Thanks. Okay, um, item B, update on downtown Boone Main Street, first quarter, Holly Sucker.
Hey, everybody. Uh, I just see up there, I know we're here to do the first quarter report, but I'm really excited to share our new logo and branding with everyone. Uh, last week we had the branding and marketing guru from Main Street America come, he spent two days with us and toured the district. Uh, got to meet a lot of community members, business owners, building owners, and uh, got to meet my, meet the board and really get a feel for everything that's going on down here. And um, in less than 12 hours, he turned around a loyal to us. As you can see, the B here, the outline is really a nod to the train tracks and the, the rail that's so important to us and vital to all of downtown and all of them. Uh, but also it represents the street grid of our district where we're bookended by the whistle stop and the Dutch oven and we go off, we're not a specific main street, we're a bigger town than a square. So, um, that's just the outline there. And then, uh, we will officially go by downtown Boone and when necessary, powered by Main Street. Do you have any questions? No? All right. So, uh, the next slide here with the pictures, uh, is just a, a little update in the first quarter. I've went to Jefferson for the spring workshop as well as a trip to Philly for the Main Street America National Conference. Uh, both were great and full of wonderful information and lots of insight to bring back and really interesting to be around, you know, hundreds of other Main Street directors and, and board members and committee members, uh, where if we all put our problems in a hat, you'd probably just want to pull yours right back out. But, um, lots of insight and, and great momentum and, and uh, lots of great sessions. Anyways, the next slide here is the, um, update on the arch. I'll just go ahead and put that in the presentation here versus the, the next uh, agenda item. But, um, you'll see here, we've got a bit of branding for the arch as well. Um, I'm happy to report that we are uh, nearing the, the last third of the fundraising for the arch. The steel has been ordered and the fabrication has begun. And just today I met with Vision Bank and we can start to talk with the city on our next steps for the location. Uh, Whalen has spent a ton of time and city staff time working on, um, recognizing the best place for the arch with the, uh, 16 foot deep footings that this needs. And, um, Whalen located, uh, fifth and story as a great location for that. It's a property owned by the city already in the parking. And again, as I mentioned, visited with Vision Bank today and had a rendering that, um, a resource of the Main Street Iowa gave me a rendering so that they could see how it would work with the Vision Bank sign that's already there. And it, it doesn't seem to pose too big of an issue. There would be a particular sideline if you're walking down the sidewalk at a particular angle, but I think as the passing traffic goes, we shouldn't have any trouble. Any questions on that?
On the logo there, um, are you gonna use that like on the fundraising materials and stuff essentially? Okay, cool.
Uh, and then for the high school students, I'd like to update on the, uh, green space, the the advantage, Amy Bosert's students, the advantage students will be painting the trash receptacles this week. It was planned for last week, but the weather was terrible and didn't work out. So, uh, they will be there on Thursday painting this week. And then the tree grade process is also moving along wonderfully. Uh, Kelly went last week measuring and the track will be cut. Uh, you may have also noticed on Friday that the students were down here, they removed all the mulch and had to dig around the um, sidewalks so that the tracks will fit in there. And those are ready to go. They'll be, uh, cut this week and delivered on Friday. And start, starting to place the tracks and then the, uh, tree grades themselves will trickle in over the next couple of weeks.
Um. Oh, the students would like to come to the next council meeting and kind of have a little practice on presentation. Um, they really did a lot of work with the designs and kind of helping us flesh that out. And you know, we're gonna do a hundred percent of the cutting. So three eight hour days at Lane Trailer, they're gonna put into it. Um, so the next council meeting, uh, they'll come and kind of talk about their process for you. Um, they know that the city's already approved this, but just sort of to give you an idea of what they've been doing. They're gonna do that.
That'd be great if they can be on the presentations at the beginning.
Yeah.
Additionally, for the, uh, tree grades, there is a grant of to Lane Trailer, and this ends up being quite a big deal for the students as well as Lane Trailer and the state of Iowa. So I'm working on scheduling a reveal for the tree grades once all of that thing as well. And also you could post it on, uh, reveal of those. Uh, this Saturday, we had the spring cleanup. We had a dozen or so people show up. It was beautiful Saturday. Felt really nice to be outside and digging in the dirt and reading and, uh, picking up all the trash. Thanks again to Whalen. I think he got all that picked up this morning with the, um, trash bags and everything. So, thank you for that. On our financials, I'm happy to report again that 95% of our spending was screened within the downtown district and, um, just really proud to be able to say that we keep all of that money so local. And in the first quarter, we had, uh, ribbon cuttings at Midtown Crossing in their grand opening. The downtown Boone Main Street, we hosted an open house and a volunteer drive. The Galentine's event was co-hosted with the Chamber in February. And Serenity Spice and Tea Shop also had its grand opening and, uh, our upcoming date is somewhere on the story on May 24th.
Excellent. Council questions?
It's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks to the board members that are here as well. Okay, so we got C out of the way. We won't separate that on the arts project. Uh, D, announcement of a community event and funding request, Chris Blocker.
All right, well, I'm back. I just saw you guys. It seems like the last meeting, but, um, I have some more great news, like I like to come with, um. We, uh, have the exciting news of RV TV will be making a stop this year in Boone. So, um, that's our exciting news, September 4th. So like, we don't have enough going on in September, but the first week, um, uh, Thursday, September 4th, um, uh, they will be here. Um, so we're excited about that. Put together a small little committee. Um, talk it through some of those logistics of what that'll be like. And as you guys can see in the little packet I gave you, um, are a few examples of what, uh, couple communities did last year. First off, if you don't know what RV TV is, it's WHO Channel 13 does a, a week long, um, road trip basically, and they go through five different communities and then stop each day and each night. Um, the towns do fun festival type of things. And, uh, we anticipate doing the same thing. Last time they were here in 2017, we made a big celebration, um, when they were here as well and um, plan to kind of outdo that and make it even bigger and better. So, um, with that, obviously, um, a funding request would come. I, um, you know, obviously this isn't something that was ever budgeted. So I would, uh, look to the council to, to help fund that. Um, I believe in 2017, you guys funded at either a five or $6,000, um, uh, ask. And this year we're thinking, um, approximately around $8,000 for, um, looking at bringing some rides, a lot of entertainment. Um, just different activities. We're looking at doing some, uh, um, discounted, if not free food to hand out to all the citizens of Boone. Just trying to get everybody down there. Of course, I'll start working with the school district to, um, see what they can do for bringing their bands and cheerleaders and football players and um, involve all the school as well. So. Anyway, with that, do you guys have any questions?
Comments? 2017 was the last time?
2017.
I thought there was another time.
No, Matt, you're not wrong.
Oh. Yeah.
She applies.
I did.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You should have sufficient amount of reserve for 8,000. It's kind of a hotel motel reserves is exactly what the money is for, for promotions.
It's a big deal. Already started some of the planning, so we got ways to go.
We need a motion on that?
Yeah. Yeah. Some of the logistics, we might, um, change our nights on the green from Friday night to that Thursday night. Yeah, we'll see what that looks like. We have a lot of obviously, I just got down to five last week, so we have a lot of things to work through. And it's not public, so don't open it on Facebook quite yet. Um, tomorrow, I believe, um, they've told me that they're running to make the announcement. So we'll follow suit and make the big announcement that they do.
Do you remember if, um, last time you got the budget and then came back and said, here's what you need? Or if it was just, hey, here's, here's this amount of money and?
Yeah, we talked about that. Uh, we'll spend the money and then submit the bill.
With the itemized.
So it's, it's, it's not to, to, not to exceed 8,000.
Right. Yeah.
So, because we don't know how many donations we're gonna get. We don't know what that looks like yet. So. Yeah, we haven't been able to solicit donations because it hasn't been formally announced.
Public.
Yeah, we got all summer.
That's, that's, that's a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the funding request to not exceed 8,000.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Birds.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Hey.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. Congratulations. Uh, okay, E, uh, approve fiscal year 2026 human services grant recommendations. That's Kyle.
Uh, this is pretty standard from year to year. We had the same request pretty much as we've had in the past. Uh, we didn't physically meet, it was through an email, um, with the amount of funding requests that we had and the amount of funding we had, we're only short $4,500. Um, in the past, we've always, uh, we've fully funded the majority of them in this year as well. We're gonna fully fund them except for Herta. We're gonna just knock them down to 4,500. And that's still more than what they, is exactly what they've gotten in the past. So.
Herta always asks for a lot more than we, what we are able to fund.
Yeah.
And just so everybody's aware, this comes from a portion of the local option sales tax, 5% of local option sales tax has to go to human services agencies.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, yeah, um, and you know, we're always looking for to fund other stuff as well. So if anybody gets out and, and gets their application, then we gladly take that as well.
Have that 501(c)(3) on file for that.
Yep, so. But other than that, I said, we'll just take a motion to approve the funding as seen on the screen.
The move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, F set a public hearing for May 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the consideration of proposed fiscal year 2025 budget amendment.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
G set a public hearing for May 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the consideration of the sale of property located at 721 Lynn Street, Boone, Iowa.
The move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Okay, H, uh, 3370 resolution of authorizing a one-time employee recognition salary adjustment for Kim Majors. Um, so through our search for, uh, city administrator, uh, Kim put in a lot of extra time, given the circumstances of Bill not being available and Andre being an applicant, uh, she went well above and beyond, uh, what her job duties were. And, uh, the process could not have run, uh, without her putting in all of that extra time, uh, both in emails, arranging things, and being present on the day of the interviews and stuff like that. So want to read this resolution to, uh, commend her. Uh, whereas Kim Majors, deputy city clerk, has served, uh, the city of Boone since 2017 with dedication and distinction and whereas Majors has consistently demonstrated exceptional professionalism and a strong work ethic, and whereas Majors has made a significant contribution in fulfilling the needs of the city by contributing her time and efforts to the process of hiring a new city administrator. And whereas Majors' leadership, teamwork, and positive attitude is to be commended, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Boone council, uh, city council of the city of Boone, Iowa. Uh, one, that city, the city of Boone formally recognizes Kim Majors for her dedication and contributions to the city of Boone. Two, that a one-time lump sum payment in the amount of $500 shall be paid to Kim Majors as part of her May 15th, 2025 paycheck as a token of our appreciation and recognition for her services. So I would need a motion to approve that.
The move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, I got three proclamations here, uh, declaring a drug-free class of 2025. I did this last year as well. This comes from safe schools, uh, whereas middle school students of, uh, Boone schools in Boone, Iowa have committed themselves and their class to be drug-free. And whereas our young people have a civic and personal concern for Boone High School seniors. And whereas during middle school, you may have, as part of the Boone County Project Safe Dear Senior Project, written a personal safety appeal to yourself or another senior. And whereas this appeal asks for the graduating student to choose to be alcohol and drug-free in the new life they're about to begin. Now, therefore, I Elijah Stein, mayor of the city of Boone, Iowa, do hereby give each young citizen this challenge. Carefully treasure your freedom from alcohol and drugs. Uh, choosing that freedom every day until you arrive proud and strong at your own high school graduation. And now proclaim, proclaim and celebrate the commitment of the drug-free class of 2025. Uh, the second one is, uh, uh, it's a similar one to the proclamation last year from, uh, the Erickson Public Library, specifically Zach Steer on the proclamation for May being Mental Health Awareness Month. So, uh, whereas, uh, the area that someone lives plays significant role in their overall health and well-being. Whereas surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health. And whereas having safe, stable, healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health. And whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I Elijah Stein do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in city of Boone. As the mayor of Boone, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and councils in the city of Boone to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Is there anybody from, uh, the library? Jamie, did you want to say anything else?
Say that, so, um, this year we're not doing much with the mental health program. Um, we do, we get some party to this every day. So you'll probably see that next week too. So thank you first for doing this for the library.
You're welcome. So I think this next, uh, proclamation goes hand in hand. Uh, last week, uh, Mike and Allison, some of the park, uh, staff and I went out and planted a tree, took some pictures and recorded me reading this proclamation as well. But, uh, May is actually, uh, Arbor Month as well. So mental health and Arbor uh, go together. And this is, uh, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day is, uh, observed throughout the nation and world, and the citizens of Boone have recognized the need to beautify the city with planting trees. And whereas many volunteers have donated their time and dollars to the Boone Volunteer Tree Maintenance Program. And whereas the city of Boone recognizes the social and economic value, which includes increased property values, habitat for wildlife, life-sustaining oxygen, air pollution filtration, enhancement of economic vitality of business areas, and beautification of our community. Therefore, it's essential and fitting that the benefits of trees be acknowledged. Now, therefore, I Elijah Stein's mayor of the city of Boone, Iowa, do, do hereby complain, proclaim April 29th, 2025 as Arbor Day in Boone and proclaim May as Arbor Month in Boone. I also urge all citizens to plant new trees for the Boone's future and to provide care for their existing trees throughout the entire year. Find that one as well previously. Thank you for all you do, uh, for the trees in our city and all of your staff and what they do as well.
Thank you.
What's my agenda? Okay, uh, public comment for items not on the agenda.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I was wondering whether, uh, tennis courts resurfacing.
Yep.
Um, last I knew, we wait for schools to paper have.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for, uh, the question on the tennis courts. I did look up, we have $25,000 budget on a local option sales tax, uh, which should approximately cover half of the cost for resurfacing the McCose Park uh, tennis courts. Um, the, in the 20E agreement with the school, there's not the commitment from the school to pay half of the maintenance of that. So we're working on a plan to utilize that $25,000 and potentially, uh, start with four of the courts now and work with the school to see what their commitment would be, perhaps the booster club, uh, to finish the other four courts in the next fiscal year. But the fiscal year doesn't start till July 1st, and so that money wouldn't be available to them.
Okay, so when will you start on this potentially?
Mike, what would you think?
Well, it would depend on the contractor for one. And, uh, usually July possibly. But there's six courts, so we'd be doing three.
Three. I'm sorry, I missed that there.
There's no way to give like a budget amendment to reobligate money to just get them all done. It's a girl's tennis coach actually reached out and started me about it.
Yeah, I believe I heard from him this morning as well. And I spoke with the superintendent today too. Uh, she was unsure of the necessity of getting all of the courts done immediately, actually. So um, we'll start with the first three with the money that we have budgeted and we'll work on the rest of the money for the next fiscal year.
We can't do like a budget amendment. Like, so if you guys want to, we just move funds around to finish all the courts.
That'd be for next year, correct?
For the next fiscal year.
Yeah, we could look at doing something next year, but at this time we.
Yeah, and it's, you know, if the booster club, uh, comes through with some funds, uh, if there's other donations, uh, we could potentially do a budget amendment for including that and extending that fund, those funds in that fiscal year, but it probably wouldn't get those three courts done until the spring. Any other public comments? Uh, item five, reports of standing committees, uh, B, public safety transportation, Helsbeck?
Um. Yes. We have one item. Uh, it is request to use the 628-story street for the farmer's market. I can pass this.
Kelly's here.
Oh. I remember I talked to someone about it, sorry.
He said six last year. While the streetscape was being done and it worked out really well, not have to close the street. And, um, so since there's nothing happening in that space as of yet, we would like to use that again next year.
I don't really see a problem with it if they use it last year and it worked really well. So.
Yeah, if, if that's the best spot for you guys, then.
Be in motion for that. Shouldn't need one.
Safety meeting last week for some reasons, you know, which is.
We just decided to move it to, yeah, here. So.
And, um, I think it's a great location.
Yeah, as long as it works for you.
Sounds good to me.
A little more accessible for a lot of people.
And now the street's not gonna be being redone. Please, I hope it's not. So, yeah, motion be fine.
I tend to maybe.
So, yeah.
Probably first park stuff. I guess that property is a public works, but
Right.
I, I know when it rains, uh, or something, we may be looking for a, uh, quick street closure request to move to seven.
Sure.
So just be aware, watch the weather and then Dave and Chief and I will be watching for approvals that if you see rain in the near forecast for a Thursday night, we'll, we'll have to rush for a street closure, just move you out of that street.
Thanks for, thanks for being helpful on that. Yeah, if you do need to move, you know, we want to make sure the farmer's market's secure.
And that was sort of what our intention was last year and we didn't ever have to do that. So.
Okay.
Um, I can go ahead and make that motion to other farmer's market to use the 628-story street.
I'll second that.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yeah.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Uh, C, utility, Angstrom.
Uh, just that we have a meeting coming up on the 19th, that's it.
Uh, D, economic development, Mormon.
I'll report, your honor.
Department reports, building official Dave. Uh, city attorney, city attorney Ray.
No report, your honor.
Uh, Director of Public Works, Whalen.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, real quick, in your council packets, you'll see resolution 3371. It's the authorization of execution for the professional service agreement for this year's 2025 INI sump pump inspection programs. It, uh, borders, uh, Story Street and to Jackson Street and on the east and First Street, south of Park Avenue. It looks like a, a really good area to try to work on getting close to closing out these pro, programs and this project. So I think we'll, we'll have a lot of input in this area this year. Um, and secondly, uh, we do have a small water making break going on currently. There's four residents that are under a boil advisory. It should be no big deal, but I just wanted to let you know that, uh, if you hear something, something on the north side and, uh, who's working on it right now?
And they, everybody's been notified. Yes, everybody's been notified.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 3371.
Again. Please call the roll.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Uh, E, library, Jamie.
Yeah, we will be unveiling our book bike on Wednesday, going out and taking a look at it. Um, it's really cool. We'll have kind of a, a route and a schedule of all the big stuff in the summer. So, um, it's something to kind of stop by on six, at 6:30 in the library.
3:30.
Garden here, yeah. So, I'm with. Questions? I will say that was funded through the Forest Board and the Friends of the Erickson Public Library.
Um, and then the, the, uh, library carnival, I guess that will have a meeting before now and then, but that's gonna be.
The what?
The, the carnival.
Oh, yes, that'll be, um, Monday, June 2nd. Or it's the first Sunday and I sound for. So we'll have a lot of
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, E, uh, E, park director, Mike.
Just to add to your Arbor Day announcement, uh, we did plant a burro in Linwood Cemetery. And, uh, it's, it's nice to add some trees in there since. It's, it's nice to add some trees in there since it takes many down. An update on the pool heater, uh, we're looking at approximately two weeks. When it's going to be, uh, started to install. And our roof repair will hopefully start here the next day or so at the pool as well. So that's, uh, that's caused from the blizzard in purchase, I think, so.
So will the heater, heater make the opening date? Will it be up and running?
Should, yeah, I think, uh.
Be closed, won't it?
First part of June.
Yeah.
Should be fine.
Thank you. Preparation Director, Nate. Engineer Perry.
Thank you, your honor. A couple items. Uh, first is resolution three-three-seven-two, a holy contract for the, uh, H M A pavement cracking filling, pavement crack filling, uh, project, and this would be on Lemon Street and A Street. Uh, two roads that were recently overlaid, and mainly this is a, uh, maintenance item that needs to be done to prevent further deterioration in streets in the future, so you, uh, received three bids for this project. Oh, bid came in from Parking Lot Specialties. Are liable for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. We recommend the board contract to them.
You, are you comfortable with that, Perry? They're half of the second bid and third of the third bid.
Parking lot, they do a lot of work.
Okay. Okay, as long as you're satisfied, I just was curious.
That's all some kind of.
Okay, but I'd like to add, this is a program that I've been trying to start, trying to do for the last couple of years and get on to it, and this is just another testament of having Perry involved, uh, on board with us. Uh, I mentioned it to him, we walked it, and it's in process already, so I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Go through. Again, please call the roll.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
To Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
And the next item is the, uh, Hepworths Project at the wastewater plant. We received one bid last week. Uh, they came in way over estimate, nine hundred thousand dollars over what we were anticipating for that project. So at this point in time, we're asking the table to order that until we find out or about how to proceed with that. Um, the engineers are looking at, um, re- possibly repackaging the project, uh, to lower the costs. Uh, they're talking to the contractors that were plan holders, why they didn't bid on the project and so forth, so, um, I've got a meeting with them on Thursday to talk more about this. I anticipate that we may end up rebidding this project in next couple of months, just to see if we can get better bids. The one thing that I learned, um, talking to the engineering firm at, uh, their S C H, is that Winter Set had a large wastewater project bid at the same time, which we didn't know, so I'm sure that probably caused some bidders to kind of stay away from this. Yeah, nothing, nothing to take action off, just letting you know that we're gonna be.
You have to change the date, maybe?
I think we might.
Our date?
Yeah, uh, we could actually extend the completion date further back because some equipment lead to handle it. Up to a year.
Might catch some additional contractors that were.
So we're looking at all of it.
Yeah, and then take a motion to table, rebid.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the table.
Just.
I'll make the motion to table this, at this time.
Second, please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
To Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, Public Safety Chief Adams.
Uh, yes, your honor, just a quick reminder that the eighteenth, we have our pancake fundraiser on, uh, Sunday morning, so if everybody can come up.
Chief Weevil.
Thank you, your honor. Um, the last fall, we, uh, switched from wind stream when we had issues to voice over I P for all the telephones at the police department, and in doing so, um, it made our fax machine obsolete. And why many people think fax machines are obsolete in law enforcement, they are not, because it's, uh, the only secure way we can actually send information sometimes. Um, so, um, looking at options, we looked at a lot of different things, and a lot of them required a credit card on file or those types of things that our finance option does not like, or state manager does not like now. And so, um, in looking at our, our printer contract was coming due, and talking to the printer company access, um, they had an option where it, we could, a new printer contract would include a fax machine inside of it, or, or it's all technology now, but, uh, include that, so, um, it does add a little bit of cost to the last year's printer contract, but, um, that is just for the software to do this, and it's, it's well worth it, and we need it. Uh, we get a lot of calls about, hey, your fax machines now, or your faxes aren't going through, and we need to send you secure information, and so something we need to do with the PD. So I think I need a motion.
Move to approve, again, for the roll.
Uh, Oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, City Administrator, Andrea.
Yeah, I first want to thank everyone, uh, for the time they took, uh, going through that process of hiring a new city administrator. I look forward to working with all of you, um, and department heads, um, as well as the citizens for Boone. Um, with that being said, uh, that leaves the city clerk position open. Um, and I sent out, uh, last week, a copy of the city clerk ordinance. Um, and there's two options we can do. We do have to post it for ten days. One is that we can do it internally, ten days to see if there's any internal candidates that are interested in it. Um, or we could do an internal and an external at the simultaneously, um, taking those applicants. If you want to do internal, uh, the question would be is, do we want them to submit a full resume, uh, cover letter, application, or just a letter of interest? Um, is how we've done it in the past too. This is a city council appointment.
My recommendation would be an internal listing for this mission.
Just an internal for now?
Yeah.
And just a request?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, a letter of interest, uh, including background and things like that, relevant details.
Okay. I, I, I think that's fine.
Okay, uh, the next, um, item is a resolution approving a agreement with R O I Energy. Uh, this is, um, for changing out our current light fixtures to an L E D light fixtures. Uh, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six budget for improvements here at City Hall. We don't want to spend all of that, so what we're recommending is doing half of them this year. Wait till the end of the fiscal year, see where we're at, um, and then decide if we can do the other half at the end of the fiscal year, or budget for them in the next, uh, fiscal year. Uh, with that also is, um, light fixture changes in the fire department, some exterior and some in the, um, bay, I believe. Um, and I believe you have the funds in this year's budget. Um, so all I'm asking for there is approval to move forward with, uh, the R O I Energy, uh, agreement. Uh, there is a, uh, fifty-six hundred dollar grant that will help pay for this also, leaving the city share, uh, being thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
The move. Second. Any questions?
No, I'm assuming this will make our light bill cheaper.
It's supposed to.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Also, in the consent agenda, you'll find another, uh, resolution approving a tax credit application. This time, uh, it's for elite construction, and they are gonna be three owner-occupied units. The Green Street and Morrison Street, the other ones were rentals, these are owner-occupied. I think that's exciting. Um, resolution acknowledging the agreement between People's Bank and Hanson and Gardner for the financing of Oak Park. This is really just us acknowledging that they have an agreement, um, in regards to the TIF and development agreement that we have with Hanson and Gardner. Um, and I think that's all.
Thank you. Uh, item seven, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate respect on these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
The most.
Second. Please call the roll.
That.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
To Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes. Eight ordinances, we have none. Uh, nine mayor's comments, uh, it's it's official now, uh, Andrea has been hired as a new city administrator. And I want to congratulate her on that, uh, and I want to thank everybody who participated in the process, uh, really taking it seriously, examined all the candidates. Um, uh, your, your feedback was very, very important to all of us, uh, and, uh, you know, we'll, uh, look forward to a bright future for our city. Council member comments.
I have a couple of things. Uh, nights on the green last Friday, cold. But, uh, it will get warmer, I promise. Uh, but it was fairly successful. I think our clicker was close to five hundred.
Awesome.
So for being cold and a little miserable, it wasn't bad, so, uh, thank you for everybody that came. My mayor was there and Lisa, I believe, Kyle. I don't know if cold was.
Oh, my kids were sick.
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, assumed that. Anyway, thank you. Um, I put on your desk, uh, a list of topics that we will be discussing in D C with all of our elected officials. Um, rural infrastructure grants and programs as it pertains to sewer and water projects, rural broadband expansion, railroad concerns, where we're gonna hit them again on the U P and the blocked tracks and the underpass and among other things, uh, air, airport improvement grants and programs and lead pipe abatement. We want to keep that on their radar because the city is looking at it a major expense for their citizens, so we're gonna try to keep that on the radar. Federal housing grants and programs for rural communities, and then we also added, it's not on that list, but it, we added the Veterans Center. Um, there is funding available, we were told, so we're gonna try to see if we can get some grants for that new Veterans Center.
Awesome.
Which would be a good deal. And then, uh, Andrea put together a a sheet that we're going to send to all the elected officials out there. We're meeting with all of them with the exception of Hinson. Uh, Hinson had a, a, a committee meeting that was scheduled for that time period, so she has to miss. But the rest of them, we're all gonna meet, so we're meeting with, uh, Grassley, Ernst, Nun, Feenstra, and Miller Me. Vivy Day. If you have any other suggestions, the things you want us to talk about, we can certainly add it to the agenda. So, uh, after the council meeting, just see Kyle or David or myself and, and Andrea, and you can add that to the list. It's all happy.
Lisa?
Yep, um, I just wanted to, uh, thank the police for the, uh, Citizens Academy, which we just graduated the, uh, Thursday night, and if you haven't done it yet, I highly recommend it. Um, we, it's, it's a nice peek into law enforcement. There's what you think it is, and there's what it is, and there's a couple that we don't know, but it's not like it's on TV, even though some people were insisting it's just like TV. Um, we did a crime scene, we went to the shooting range, we did ride along, and they fed us dinner, so it's a bad deal, but the best part was getting to know our officers, so I strongly urge anybody to sign up to twenty twenty-six. Thanks.
Fantastic program. Thank you for, for doing that. Thank you for participating. Other council member comments? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.